Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing to discuss the fiscal year 2025 budget hearing. I will be getting this meeting at 6:40 PM and I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent. First, we have to introduce.
I have a duty just in the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, amen to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the individuals who are watching remotely, we will broadcast the PowerPoint presentation. The school committee has part copy in front of them. This hearing has been posted, actually it's been posted twice because the non-snow event was our first schedule for the hearing on the 13th. And also, school committee members in your packet, I have enclosed all of the the policies that pertain to budget, public hearings. And the reason is twofold, number one, if you have any questions about any of them. And many of them we just passed in October of 2023, so they're new, so I wanted you to have them. The way the budget development works in this school district and in almost all others is the superintendent and his or her staff begin developing the budget in November. The budget that I am going to present as the final superintendent's budget this evening is the budget that the Board of Selectmen saw on the 21st of February. There hasn't been no alterations from the budget that they saw. We began with the first version way back in November and December. And this is the fourth version. The revenue for most cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts this year is stagnant. If you remember, most of us got a return of money just two years ago from the state, we got a check because the surplus was too high. And here we are just two years later and the governor had to do nine C cuts. Nine C cuts mean that there are things that were funded by the legislature, approved by the governor, that the state can no longer afford. So the governor in January, early January, reduced the expenditures of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts by about $350 million just two years after there was more money in surplus than legally permissible. So that's the way public funding is, you just never know. So just as a reminder, this is my budget as superintendent of schools. That's why it's entitled superintendent's budget. At some point, the chair of the school committee will ask the members of the school committee to approve the budget, to amend the budget, or to reject the budget. That is how it works. And then I'm sure you are aware that I have been and you have been invited to go to the finance committee meeting at 6:30 PM on March 7. If more than three of you wish to go, then I'll post the meeting. And if only one or two of you wish to go, then it will be a finance committee meeting. So the first slide is one I always put in, I want everyone who's watching to know who the members of the school committee are. And the town of Nahant, the children of Nahant, the staff of the Johnson Elementary School are indeed fortunate to have these five individuals representing the community. It has been a, basically a stress-free trip. We talk about money, we talk about all the good things, we talk about children. We, the focus of these five individuals has always been what's best for kids. We all know what's been happening in other school districts where, you know, superintendents have been summarily dismissed for one reason or another, or there have been fiscal issues or behavioral issues. We are blessed that none of that has happened in this school district. And I have been here since 2016, so basically eight years. And I want to thank all five of you publicly for all your support and all your focus on children. And I also want to thank all the members of the school committee who have been on the school committee during my eight years here. It has really been a wonderful experience for me. So let's get into it. The 2025 budget is increased by $190,157. The school committee has traditionally asked for the budget to be divided into three segments. The Johnson School segment, the district segment, and the town segment. And I will explain each of those as we go through. This slide shows you how much each of those segments is increasing for fiscal '25. It also details without numbers, we'll start without numbers, just concepts, why the budget's going up. Now, I probably didn't even have to say any of these things because we all know what's happening in our own personal lives in terms of cost. We know things are going up, you can't buy anything today for the same amount of money you bought it for last year. It just isn't happening. So this, these numbers include all supplies, services, and materials. All salary increases, and as a reminder, this is the last year of the collective bargaining agreement with the NTA. Unit A or our licensed educators are getting a 2.5% increase. And Unit B, our paraprofessionals, are getting 5% increase. I want to remind the members of the school committee that when we signed this agreement two years ago, the other school districts are having a very difficult time with paraprofessional salaries. As a matter of fact, the most recent Newton issue was basically about paraprofessional remuneration. So what we decided to do is rather than put a huge amount of money into one year, we would sign a three-year contract and give our paraprofessionals 3% the first year, 4% the second year, and 5% the third year. And in that way, give them a substantial increase over time without bankrupting the budget. This budget has one additional teacher assigned to the sixth grade because currently we have no sixth or eighth teacher. I'll talk more about that later. It includes educational materials and supplies, all of which have had significant increases. The Swanson Scott tuition, it's a 2.5% increase. And I have to commend the school committee for signing that five-year agreement with the Swanson Scott School District for a 2.5% increase each year. Right now, with the increases that we're all experiencing, that looks like a bargain. It also has, this budget has in the annual cost for this year's sixth grade, which the school committee and the Swanson Scott School Committee decided to spread over four years, starting last year. Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School, there is going to be an increase in enrollment from Nahant. Therefore, it is a per student cost. The special education, we have the cost increase here, we have the cost increase in tuition and also transportation. The special education testing materials, we buy those on an annual basis, obviously billing costs. Technology licenses are going up pretty dramatically. And then we're going to begin the process of replacing our desktops for our teachers. The significant impactors on the fiscal '25 budget can be boiled down to three or four. Let me detail those. The entire budget is going up 4.17%, $190,000. The additional classroom teacher is $61,355 of that. I am projecting the higher, the master's step two. That's 1.5% of the 4.17. The Essex Tech tuition with 14 students is going up $162,219. And we have 14 students there. That's four more than currently. That's a 1.36% of the total increase. The Swanson Scott tuition increase, the 2.5% plus approximately $20,000 for the sixth grade per year is a 1.37% of the total increase. And the out-of-district tuition, I have reduced that impact to $15,832 by applying state aid to offset the fiscal '25 impact. But the actual costs are going up of about $57,000. But I am only budgeting the net, in other words, we'll pay for that with the circuit breaker. Now, the interesting thing for you, members of the school committee to see, is that those four items actually are larger in value than the entire growth of the budget. Which means that the rest of the budget is basically going down $11,000. The way I did that was by budgeting nets instead of grosses. So for example, you will note that the electric and the heating gas bill, or budget rather, is actually lower than this year. Well, obviously, you're not going to spend less. But we, since I've been here, we have not had to charge our early childhood program for utilities. They should pay utilities if everything else is equal. Well, next year, they will be paying utilities as they will this year, which is fair. And they have a significant amount of money in their revolving account. All has been built during my time here with tuitions. In past years, I only took that at the end of the year if we needed it. This, next year and this year, I know we're going to need it. So I budgeted it for '25, that's how I can, we can do that. We're not actually going to spend $11,000 less on the education of our children. But it will come from non-budget places. Okay? Please stop any time.
Yes, okay, I have a question. Between the Essex Tech tuition, it says how this keeps going on, more kids are going to Essex Tech. And I was wondering, like, is there a true-up between the amount of kids going to Essex Tech versus Swanson Scott High School? Like, how does that work if there's some kids that you might have thought were going to go to Swanson Scott High School and they end up deciding when they're in middle school to go to Tech?
That's a great question. First of all, we know that our Essex Tech bill is what it is because it's based on the October 1st number of this current year. That's how it's always done in education. Now, we have four seniors. So if we have fewer ninth graders going to Essex Tech this September, the '26 budget could go down. Seven years ago, the school committee and I were having a very difficult time negotiating an agreement with Swanson Scott. There were a variety of reasons. The FinCom and Swanson Scott wanted us to pay a premium. They were stating that the Nahant children were not going, they were not paying their fair share. The Nahant taxpayers were getting a high school and middle school education for less money than the Swanson Scott taxpayer. We mutually decided that the old way of doing things, which was X dollars per student done the October 1st the year before, was causing issues. What we decided to do was sign an agreement, which has been now been done twice, that simply took a dollar amount and increased it every year by a reasonable amount, regardless of how many students are there. So if we, if Nahant has 120 students at, no, I mean, make a much more realistic number. If we had 140 students at Swanson Scott Middle School and High School, we wouldn't pay no more than if we had 110 students. If we had 150 students the next year, we would pay no more than the contract calls for it. And the reason the finance committees and the school committees decided to do it that way is because it's stable. What was happening before, you had a, you know, you'd have a large senior class graduating and a small seventh grade class go in. So the amount of money that Swanson Scott would receive would go down. If the opposite happened, the amount would go up, so we'd have to find a lot of money. This way, it's stable. So there's no correlation.
But that's only what Swanson Scott, we don't have that same.
Of Essex.
No, Essex Tech, the agreement isn't the same as every agreement with every regional school. It's based on people to hear before.
Yeah.
And we only have, I mean, is it, is it my understanding that we only have a number of seats? A max number of seats that kids can go anywhere?
Okay, that's a really interesting, debatable issue that the new acting commissioner is probably going to take on. I've known Russell Johnston for quarter of a century, and this is one of the sticking points. When the original agreement is first set up, every school district is put in a line from the largest school district to the smallest. And the, and the regional vocational high school agreement guarantees X number. So no matter what happens, we have five.
Okay.
Now, what that means is anything over five is competitive. So we have next year, or this year, nine children who didn't qualify based on our minimum, but based on, they qualified on a competitive basis. And their interviews, their disciplinary records, their attendance records, it's quite an extensive process. Okay? Thank you. All right, so this slide.
I was just, is everybody clear that the commissioner of education resigned and we're getting a new commissioner, an acting commissioner? All right, I just wanted to make sure people, okay. It was abrupt and unexpected that he really finished, March 15th is his last day. It was very sudden news, happened two weeks ago, it's yeah, right before the break. And it's usually indicative of like some tough circumstances, it's just something to be to know in the acting commissioner that at this point in time, nice guy, but it's the acting commissioner. So maybe they've changed, that's just most important to know.
Yeah, Dr. Johnston, the acting commissioner as of March 16th is a long and successful career in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, including West Springfield, Newton, Wellesley. And he, he's a universally highly regarded.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
Yeah. Okay, so the Johnson School budget changes, this is where I get into the, more into the numbers. Updated for current and budget staff collective bargaining agreements, 2.5% Unit A, 5% Unit B. Adds a sixth grade teacher, we will have two sections of first grade and fourth grade, one section of A2356 for a net addition of one classroom teacher, which is in the budget. Building maintenance, a new rating program, and actually come and talk about that with the faculty today. We have assessment licenses, technology licenses, and technology replacements. 25 of our desktops are 2012 models and 10 are 2014 models. So this totals to 23.2% of the total budget increase or $44,042. Please stop me anytime. The district budget changes, now the district line items are much, many, many fewer. So it's the tuition for the junior, senior high school at Swanson Scott, which is a 28.3% of the total budget increase. A small increase for the superintendent's office and a less of a cost for the school committee cost. Out-of-district tuition plus the Northeast Collaborative is a $16,000 increase. And once again, that will be, the real increase will be offset by other sources of income. So the district increase is 42.4% of the total increase. The town changes, like the district changes, are very few line items. The out-of-district transportation, that's an interesting one because I have no idea what that's going to cost. If you remember, two years ago, we switched from, two budgets ago, this is the first year, actually. We switched from having a contract with NRT on our own to joining the SEAM Collaborative. So the SEAM Collaborative Finance Director is actually negotiating that for about 17 school districts. The word from everybody this year is that the out-of-district transportation will be extremely more, much more expensive. We're talking 40 to 50%. So my recommendation to the superintendent for the 2024-25 school year is to offer to pay parents and guardians to transport their own children. It will be, number one, in my opinion, better for the kids, and number two, much more cost-effective. So that number, I just don't know. But we will pay for the increase via the circuit breaker or other sources. The general transportation is up $2,464, but not really. I negotiated a deal with them where we increased about 4 to 5% for three years and then we had a two-year rider with no increase. But if you remember, I came to you a few months ago and put on another late bus because the late bus wasn't at a time when our students could use it. So the increase for that is 2,464, that's why that's increased. And then the Essex tuition, we've talked about. So the town changes represent 34.4% of the total increase of $190. So the next slide simply shows you what I just said, hopefully in an efficient way. So there's the fiscal '24 cost, how much each of the three segments of the budget went up, the fiscal '25 cost, and the percentage cost of each segment. Please note that the total is 19157 or 4.17%. By the way, I don't want to complain, but I had to redo every number on these sheets when the town hall called me over and said, you gotta touch a button. And the last sheet shows you the four-year span. And we've been doing very good up until the last two years, just like everybody else. If you notice, for four years, our average increase was 3%. Then it went up to, for the next four years, it went to 3.68%. And then for the last two years, it's been 4.32%. But again, for next year, it's 4.1. I always close basically with the same sentence, and I firmly believe that. I have presented to you the budget that's as low as responsible management can tolerate. Anything lower than this, in my opinion, would be not responsible. And I respectfully recommend that you approve this budget for the fiscal '25 school year as the district budget, as one that I would present to you, for you to the finance committee next Thursday on the 7th of March. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lloyd's joined the call, and she just applauded.
Well, thank you, Tony, for the time and the energy that you always take and the financials when you look at the budget. And I, for one, feel very confident that you've gone through every single line on many, many occasions. Does anyone have any questions? That was great.
Yeah.
Nope, thank you for your thoroughness, Tony. And also, thank you to Beth for mentioning that. I did not realize that that was going on with the education person was leaving. So thanks, everybody, for your updates.
If there are no questions, could I have a motion to approve the budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 superintendent's budget and accept it as the budget of the school committee.
Madam Chair, if I may respectfully suggest that the motion must have in it the amount of $4,742,332.
Think of the amount of, four million, four million, I think seven hundred. Four million, 742,320. Do I have a second, second? Call on favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your confidence.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Yes.
I know it was a lot of work and we sent you back. But I have to.
You know what's frustrating is when you get, the frustrating thing? If you remember how much I presented the last version versus, it was $30,000. Every number had to be changed because every percentage was changed, every net, you know, how, the percentage of each number as part of the whole.
Right.
So I spent literally a day going over, and I made a mistake, I called it. So, of course, once you make a mistake on something like this, you kind of go back and check every single number. Is that the only mistake I made? But I believe that the Board of Selectmen and the finance committee will support this budget because we were responsive to the gap that the town had. There was a debate about spending free cash on one-time costs. And I made this suggestion, and I really believe this, that town free cash shouldn't be used to finance the school budget. I always think that's a bad precedent. Because once that begins, if you only do it once, then the next budget pops because you use free cash one time. The logical reply to that is, well, if you only buy things that are only used or only cost for, you know, single-time cost, that doesn't happen. We don't have many, if any, of those. You'll see later, what I've been able to do this year is all those single-time costs, I've gotten money from other sources, not the budget, you know, grants and things like that, so.
Well, thank you. Open to public comment, if anyone would like to make a comment, and I'm sorry I have the wrong laptop on, so I. If I see this far.
So you're aware, we have Ms. Barbara Beatty on.
You can ask a question.
We have Bert Usin, we have your colleague Leanna Deloyd, we have Rob Lebo, and Ms. Lanes on the call as well on the side.
I'd like to make a comment.
That's Ms. Beatty?
Right.
Go ahead, Ms. Beatty.
I want to thank you, Tony, because I know that you did have to. I want to thank you, Tony, because I know that you did have to make some changes and that we were dealing with a tight budget this year. Um, as I know, you're very aware, and so I'm on FinCom. And I want to thank you, much appreciated. Um, I know that it meant you had to go back through and a lot of more work. And, um, I know that, um, our town administrator, Tony Barletta, and all the Board of Selectmen are very appreciative that this took time and effort, and so I just wanted to let you know that that's, we're grateful. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Through, through the chair, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
And we all look forward to our presentation. Um, just as a reminder, the cover page of the PowerPoint will be totally changed because it's no longer my budget. As of the vote, it's now the, uh, school committee's budget. So I'll send the PowerPoint with a new cover sheet.
Right, and congratulations. It's always good to, I've been coming to this meeting for years, well, whatever, anyway, it's always good. Your presentations are excellent, and, um, it's good to hear the unanimity of support, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. They're now for the comments. I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven oh nine. That's okay. I'll second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Is there a different link?
No, it's the same one here. It's the same, yeah, it had to be.
I'll just keep it live.
Yeah, oh yeah, it has to be the same link because we don't, the town doesn't have that many.
We've got connections, but we don't have that many links. Sorry. Oh, have a seat here, Brady. Come on down, students. Ms. Chaney felt ill, and so she's gonna be out for five days, I might not say why. But, um, so, yeah, really unfortunate timing, but, um, she'll sense her best. And, um, I guess I'm here in her stead as an educator. So you're explaining how Ms. Chaney, uh, felt ill.
Yes.
So be out for five days, and I wasn't gonna say why for five days specifically, but.
I knew you said pretty, um, whenever you say somebody's gonna be out for five days, everybody goes, aha!
It's not a vacation.
Well, ready, I will call our school committee to order at seven eleven.
To the republic for which it stands, the nation under God.
Has everyone had opportunity to review the meeting minutes for power in the form of the twenty-third of January? Yes. Have any changes? I don't have any. If there are any changes, could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for regular school committee on January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hello, welcome everybody. May I have a motion to move item eight? Forward.
Great. I'll make a motion to move item eight, the Massachusetts Partnerships for you, two thousand twenty-four elementary poster contest award up to.
I'll second motion by Miss Dan.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, hello and welcome.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, thank you. Well, we have several special guests here tonight. Uh, we are honored to have Ms. Margie Daniels from the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth. And our students each year compete in a contest, a co- a poster contest sponsored by MPY. Uh, and, uh, our superintendent, Mrs. Parentozzi, is the Chair of the Board for MPY. And he has been involved with MPY for many years as well, and I believe helped found it?
No, no. Where am I the Chair? I'm the President of the Board.
President of the Board.
Judith, Judith Klimkowitz is the Chair of the Board.
All right, very good. Thank you, thank you. Um, and we have several students today who are recognized by Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth for their fine work with Ms. Laura Chaney, who's not able to be here, her art te- their art teacher. And this year's theme, maybe I could ask Ms. Margie Daniels to come up and talk a little bit about the theme for the year and share a bit about, um, what, what she's seen here.
First of all, thank you so much for the invitation to come tonight. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. Um, I do all know, your superintendent has just been such a strong supporter through the years of Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth. So I want to thank you, um, Tony, that might be the last time I'm at a school committee meeting with you, so I wanted to express my appreciation and thanks to you. And I think that the Johnson School is starting to have a dynasty in our poster project. But I want to tell you that we had over two hundred entries. So the fact that three students are being recognized from the Johnson Elementary School is really phenomenal. You have some great talent here. Please express to the art teacher, um, my appreciation to her. I'm sorry she isn't here with us tonight. Um, our organization works around problems that students sometimes have, that young people have. And every year, we identify a theme that we think would be very important. And this year, the theme that we identified was respect, which cuts across, you know, there's many different ways that respect can be shown, and it's so important. And clearly, I see that in your school, you have a culture of respect and appreciation for inclusion and diversity, which, um, is fabulous. So anyway, we have a group of judges that got together. We looked at all the posters, we had some school superintendents, we had some principals, we had some guidance counselors. We had some art teachers and also some members of the MPY Board of Directors. And as a result, there are three awards here at the Johnson School. So I want to ask if you could come up and stand by your posters?
Great. So at the first poster, we have Kiki Lane, and she, uh, Kiki, can you tell us what you see on, on your poster, what you put down?
Um, I put down, respect, be a good, like, person, help people that are in need, listen to grownups, um, and pick up where.
Great. That's a perfect bound for applause. And do you have something that you wanted to present to her?
Do, but I could present to everybody then, maybe we could get that picture of everyone together.
Fantastic. Brady?
Um, I, mine's the respect of, get respect back. Um, and it adds some parts.
Fantastic. Great job, Brady. Mel, can you share a bit about your poster, what inspired you, and what kind of message you think it sends?
So obviously, I wrote, respect, give it, get it. And I just did a bunch of hands, which kind of all people.
I have a question for you. I know you're in elementary school. Do you like Amazon gift cards? You know what they are? I was gonna say, I'm not, I'm sure your parents will have them, but I have a certificate for each of you and a thank you card and also an Amazon gift certificate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If any of you don't know how to spend it, I'd be happy to.
Great, then we got a picture. You guys holding your, holding your piece like this? Let's slide it together.
Would be better, open it up.
Opening it, what's inside?
So you can actually.
Sure.
See the certificate.
That would be my question.
You can hold, I'm gonna hold open this part here, I think, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was better.
Nice, I'll, you can put your card, I'll, I'll put your card here for a second. Now you got it right, right here. Here's the cards. So you can put those there. There you go.
Let's see if we can get everybody, and then. And we want you in the future too.
And you.
And you in the future.
There's nobody, me either.
Yeah, come on, Mr. P. Come up here, Mr. P. Mr. Parentozzi, come on up, come on. Come on, we do, we have to have you up here, come on. I really had nothing to do with this, so I, I put the power on. All right, you wanna get, can you get a picture of us?
I'm glad you could get that.
I don't know if Margie mentioned this, but the judges, it's a double-blind. They don't know the age of the students, the gender of the students, or the school when they choose them.
Or the superintendent.
This is not the first year that the Johnson School has had multiple winners, so we'll see.
If you go down our hallway, you'll see other past winners, um, have their artwork come out.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, absolutely. No, it's great. We love, we appreciate your work.
Congratulations, everybody.
Again, congratulations, Ms. Chaney, for all of her dedication, and I mean, I think it just, you know, she owes her dedication to the program, and I think they're having a lot of fun.
Great to see you.
Which is, she's in the news. I'm sorry she couldn't be here today.
And the same damn, it's right in town.
Yeah, I know.
So moving on to correspondence and community input. Is anyone in the community needing to make or wanting to make a comment? Anybody?
I am not either.
I don't have a spot on. Anyone, anyone?
Nope, this is a little bit from before, at least maybe, Ms. Beatty from before.
To the examination and authorization from the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, it's a little unusual meeting, uh, this evening. You have two bill rolls in front of you. Uh, I asked the Finance Director of the Town of Nahant and the Chair of our School Committee for permission to authorize on my own signature thirty-eight thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents of bills because the, uh, school committee meeting last night was canceled and these bills needed to be paid. Some of them had penalties, some of the, uh, parents were waiting for, uh, reimbursements for certain things. So, uh, I have signed those on your behalf. So Madam Chair, if I may respectfully ask the members of the school, a member of the school committee to authorize those that I signed. And, uh, they have been, they're already paid, they were paid on the fifteenth of February. But if you would authorize thirty-eight thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents for the bills that were paid on the fifteenth of February under my signature, I would appreciate it.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the bill roll for February fifteenth, signed by Ms. Parentozzi in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Madam Chair, just, um, I have the written communication between you and myself and also the, uh, Finance Director authorizing me to sign those in case you want them for your records. Uh, and the, uh, second bill roll is the bill roll that is much more typical. That's the one from this evening. Uh, it is for one hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, very typical expenditures. Uh, the, the difference, uh, as I see it in this one is you, uh, the first two items, the secure lock and alarm, they are earmark expenditures from the security and safety grant we got, which I will talk about in a, later on in a meeting. Uh, you have special education, uh, all those payments to the, um, North Shore, Town of Marblehead, Town of Swanscott. They're for out-of-district special education. The SEEM Collaborative is the transportation. Uh, we have Amazon, we buy a lot of things from Amazon for classroom materials, uh, exterminator fees. We have the entire year of, um, legal costs. Our legal costs this year are extremely high, and we will be taking that out of, uh, different, uh, line items to pay for those. Uh, and, um, and that's about it.
What is the Salem State University vote?
We have a student at Salem State who is older than a high school student and not yet twenty-two years old.
Thank you.
And that's a special program for that individual. He, uh,
They?
Will be turning twenty-two October twen- uh, twenty-fourth.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the bill roll from two twenty-seven, twenty-four in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-four and sixty-four cents.
I'll second. Call in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, some excitement has occurred, and I'm gonna pass a, uh, this is like show and tell. I'm gonna pass that roll. That is a sample of the security film that has been placed on many windows and doors in our school. And, um, I will reiterate why. That was invented after the Oklahoma City bombing where a lot of children were, um, wounded and actually killed by flying glass. If you remember, that bomb went off in the street, and the, there was a daycare center on the first floor. So 3M invented this. Subsequently, they found out that it also is a protective film for someone trying to break into a building because what happens is it's glued to the window on the inside, and then the edges of it are glued to the frame. So if somebody's on the outside and they take a gun and shoot the window, the glass will break because it's tempered glass, so it'll shatter like your windshield. But this film is glued to it and it holds its place. And what it does is it slows down the entry by, uh, the estimates online are two to four minutes. And because of our, the proximity we have to Nahant Police Department, that's plenty of time for our police officers to get here. So, um, you'll note that that. So you'll note that that, you can't see it, it's invisible. And the only way you know it's there is because there's a very thick bead of black caulk glue on the inside, holding it in place. Holding this film against the frame. Now eventually, it will shatter and someone can break in, but it's, it takes time. This was recommended to us by the NMLAC team of police officers who visited us in the fall. They not only recommended this film, but they also, as I walked around with them, they recommended where to put it, and we put it everywhere they recommended. That, with a couple of small exceptions, that's completed, there's a couple of adds and ends. The video upgrade has been completed and we're waiting for an invoice. The improvement in our locks, including the electronic handicap entry and the lock, the tumbler locks has been done. And I believe they were the first things on the bill roll, if I'm not mistaken. Yep, secure lock and alarm. We had a maintenance item on the fire alarm, which we've done. We added the plate glass to the reception area. And by the way, that plate glass, even though it's three eighths of an inch thick, we, we put that film on the inside. And we are looking for a, a company to print new flip charts for emergency flip charts. And so right now, we have approximately forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars of the fifty thousand dollars expended or pre-invoiced. And we have about twenty-six hundred dollars left. And I asked the staff to make recommendations to me today at the faculty meeting. Any questions about security and safety? Of course, you know, the, I'm sorry, I skipped the fence in the bollards, the bollards. Which, if you noted, the yellow covers are now on them. Yeah, they look a lot better than black iron.
Easy to see, I think that's the point. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So moving on to the Principal's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, happy to share a couple of reports, last meeting in this meeting, I'll go through them in a timely fashion here. We had our early childhood education open house on January twenty-sixth, well attended with over forty folks coming out for that. We are expecting to have two classes in preschool and one class in kindergarten in the coming school year. And we're expecting to have in the neighborhood of twenty-two to twenty-four kindergarteners this coming fall. So a nice group. We had Ms. Pastor, myself, and Ms. Morton representing the educational staff. We had an overall address, Ms. Edmonds and Ms. Delicio also joined. And then we had tours of the building. And we had a few new families that haven't been to our preschool before. And always good to let, get to know those folks and answer any questions they have. I think the reception was positive. And we're looking forward to having these new students join our school. Our summer enrollment is strong for our summer program, we have forty-five students currently enrolled. I've been advertising it weekly in the newsletter. It was a big burst at first and now we're getting one or two here or there. And Superintendent Parentozzi may speak to the interest in the hiring.
So, Mr. Andrews, how many students attended last year?
Oh, I don't have that number in front of me, but I'd say it was similar but slightly smaller.
Thirty, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, yeah.
Oh, so we're.
Thirty-eight, yeah, yeah. We were out earlier, getting it out earlier as we discussed. We're putting it out in conjunction with tennis, you know, sailing, summer camp that we have here. So it's really a unified approach so the families can look at everything. I've just been in touch with the country club. And so that's gonna be the latest thing that we're gonna add to our menu of opportunities for students in the summer. And as a reminder, we just, we're booking it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So students can have enrichment or, you know, sports, other activities on the Monday, Friday. And maybe on a Wednesday afternoon, that's what sailing program's doing. But still have three days of, you know, focused, engaging enrichment activities. And I'm pleased with, you know, the planning that's already happening. We have several staff members that I'm looking forward to working with.
That's great.
I have an update on our CPA grants. You may remember the, I, several, was it last year, I put an application in for a trail to go from the Heritage Trail to our school. Tony Barletta was also at the time, unbeknownst to me, conceptualizing, moving some parks around, so he and I collaborated. He put forward a new grant that would include that trail. So I'm hopeful that the Community Preservation Act Committee will support that. I went to the meeting on February nineteenth to discuss our proposals. There's also to be an extension proposal that Mr. Barletta put forward from behind our school to go out and drive. And so looking to really put this Heritage Trail as a, as a real thing, right now it's more conceptual. It's hard to find in some of the spots. And I also presented about a boulder scramble, which is a collection of large stones that we would like to put in the forest playground from behind the hobbit dome where the kids can hide in, going up the hill, there's some erosion, we look at doing steps there. Stone steps, but a less expensive and more interactive model is to use these irregular boulders that are set in the dirt, they can't move, and they're exploratory areas for kids. And it's, it's not a new idea, it's been done before, so we're looking at some models. And I presented that to the CPC. Unrelated and kind of coincidental was the removal of the United States Coast Guard Playground. And I believe I sent you an update on that. So we have a generous parent who removed that equipment in a real timely fashion because the town was working on a tight deadline for that. And so at no cost, he removed it. It was brought to Chelsea where it's been stripped and, thank you Superintendent Parentozzi, where it's been stripped and picked at no cost because they also have a community grant that they offer. And so we're probably going to realize something like thirty to, I, I, I'm not exaggerating, probably thirty to forty thousand dollars worth of work and equipment on our school grounds. If you look at the cost of a single swing set, it's, it's expensive.
Yeah.
So we'll get everything but the swings. And so it's two swing sets, a slide, and climbing structure, and two small spring animals provide. We won't get the carousel, it spins too quick. Yeah, yeah, but.
Why don't you tell them why?
Mr. Parentozzi said no. But, yeah, truth be told, we have a fifty-page manual. And since in the seventies, OSHA or something like OSHA regulated that. And so it can only spin thirteen meters per second, so it has to have a governor in it somehow. I don't think anybody makes one. And so the parent is planning to rehab it and put it on their own property. And I put down my name as the first. So looking forward to it, I won't say names, but it's probably gonna be next to a big orange brontosaurus run by the village church. So yes, thank you to that parent who's working with us on it. Looking forward to it, it came together really quickly and that's why I wasn't able to discuss it with you in advance. So thank you for your hopeful support of that project. We are using an inspector and an architect to properly cite it. We had a great winter walk, we had sixty-four percent participation and it was a real fun event. The item covered it, that was really appreciated, got folks together. And it was probably a bummy forty degrees, but it was, it was a lovely day.
Now, Mr. Andrews, you forgot, a community event, which has been the Valentine's Day. He.
Thank you.
Miss Santron's second grade class, and I know that because my daughter was invited to be the valentine of one of the class, the brother. And I, in my mind, as a parent, I imagined a little tea in the classroom, right? And what we got, like, really speaks to this theme here, so Orion felt comfortable enough to write things that make him think of his sister, like Black Lives Matter, something from Diary of a Wimpy Kid, other like jokes I didn't even know they had together, and like just about celebratory about what it means to have a brother, right? And she felt comfortable coming and having that next to what all the other kids did. And I noticed these things as a parent, and it was, she took the day off and, and just watching the presentations. The fact that Miss Santron had them all write something, the delivery, I just, I thought, I wasn't even there. And I, but I got video, you know, and I, it was really lovely, it was a really lovely event and inclusive and celebratory and and once again, I was really just impressed with the effort there of the school, so I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, thank you for mentioning it and reminding me of it, I think, I think it's a great event, started by Martha White several years ago and continues to this day, and I agree, it's wonderful. I also didn't include on my list of things coming up, on March seventh, we're having a Youth Art Month reception at the library. And so that'll be five-thirty to six-thirty and it'll be at the, it'll be at the town library. And we have several students whose work will be displayed there.
And it blends perfectly with our presentation to the Finance Committee. We could go there between five-thirty and six-thirty and then walk right across the street.
That's right, that's right, and you'll have your sugar cookies and milk, I'm sure. Yeah, yeah, it was wonderful, they did it last year as part of Youth Art Month. And I, and I did, thank you, Ms. Lane, Ms. Lane found it on the, under curriculum. So it's, it's, it is on my list of things to talk about. In the area of technology, as Superintendent Parentozzi mentioned, under budget, we're working on upgrading our desktops. We started with a software called, or hardware called Astropad, which would let us use our old Macs and a new piece of equipment and a Mac Mini to use so we could have the old monitor and the great technology that's on those machines still. In the meantime, Google just launched Chrome OS Flex. And we've been able to, to install that on three computers so far. This is likely to be a no-cost option for us and could make it so that we do not need to purchase any new computers. It's managed centrally, everything is in the cloud, parents are already, I mean, teachers are already familiar with Google Docs, Google Sheets, all those types of things. It has what we need, and it's fast. It, it's much faster than having everything stored on the computer when it's this age computer. So Mr. Lockwood has been installing that and testing it. I've tested it in my own space and now we've had some beta tester teachers. And so my expectation is that that's gonna leapfrog over this other solution that we had as a seven hundred dollar solution. And we're probably gonna realize a no-cost solution. And you can, you can easily centrally manage all the devices, you know, from one location. So I'm excited about that. I was, in the meantime, able to reach out at your recommendation to NEF and they were ready to take up the support.
Nice.
So I was able to talk to Ms. Lisa Bell and she brought it to her, her group. They were ready to support it, I brought the proposal for that, to purchase Mac Minis and Astropads. However, I, I asked her just to put a pause on it for a minute. We're gonna keep testing Google Chrome OS Flex and, and see if that works better. And I think it's less complicated than the Astropad, Mac Mini combination. In the area curriculum, we're looking at a new reading assessment. It's DIBELS, which has been used for decades, it comes out of the University of Oregon. It's free, but it comes in a paper pencil assessment, it's a five-minute assessment the teachers do. We're looking to use amplified part called M-Class where teachers would sit with the student for four minutes with an iPad, show them letters, or have them do reading passages, quickly score them. And the data would seamlessly go onto M-Class's platform. So we could use that as a, as a easy, quick reading assessment. It's fully aligned with the state's requirement, right now the state's requiring that all students from K to three be assessed in reading. We've already done that anyway, but they have a very specific list of assessments we can use. I-ready is one of them, but it only partially meets. DIBELS is one that's been used for a very long time and is fully supported by the state. And so today at the faculty meeting, I, I presented my recommendation that we move to this. And so next step will be for me to talk to Mr. Parentozzi about the cost of licensing. The, the paper cost is free, it is quite extensive in terms of the math that has to happen in terms of scoring. So if we could use a technology piece that would let the teachers quickly do an assessment, that would be great. It would tie in with our reading groups. I think we heard a nice report from Ms. Daniels about the MPY poster contest and the outcome of that. That was fantastic. I mentioned the art show that's coming up. And I wanted to let you know that our band program added percussion. And so we now have drums, cymbals, and a full band. I have a video I'm gonna put on Parents Square from today. And you walk into the cafeteria and there's a spread of kids and they're all playing together, and it was wonderful. And so I'm, I'm really happy the way that that's progressed over the school year. Mr. Bullock said stop talking about it so much, he's getting embarrassed by the success of it, but I said, no, you deserve it. Yeah, his enthusiasm is fantastic. So that, that's wonderful to see as well. In the area of instruction assessment and professional development, I am working with our school council and our teachers on the Student Opportunity Act submission. This is a three-year plan. What we're supposed to do is look at the, the separation in scores between some groups of students in reading and math and see if there's a discrepancy or a distance between those groups. I've been doing that, some of our data in our school brains is not quite accurate, but it did give me a glimpse into the fact that, you know, we may have a gap between students who identify as Hispanic and students who are not identifying as Hispanic and also as students who are, have special needs and those who do not. And we don't have enough students that identify as low income to make a subgroup out of. We have seventeen percent of our students are low income, but we didn't have, we didn't have enough data to look at that. MCAS wasn't helpful because we don't have enough students taking MCAS that are also in these subcategories. But I-ready was useful for that. And so I'm looking at a valid twenty percentage point spread between students who are Hispanic origin or students who are not, and then targeting what we, how we can support those students. And so that's gonna be our target population to work with. And then I also wanted to just briefly review the assessment update from last meeting that we didn't meet, we have a chance to. Six B one, I wanted to see if you had questions about, I think you have this, this one here, yep, thank you, Mr. Parentozzi. I'm sorry, I'm going through things kind of quickly, if you have questions as I go, okay. A lot, a lot to review, yeah. Yeah, just jump in if you have any. So thank you, Mr. Parentozzi, I was absent the day that you had your last meeting. And I believe he was able to talk to this briefly. But I can let you know the different tiers, tier, so we have, on this, the first triangle on ELA, again, this comes from our I-ready results, we have a dashboard which is helpful for me in terms of breaking down the data. Tier one means students who do not need special interventions in the classroom. This is our typical, what you might call a typical student, fifty-two percent is what you'd expect because of the way that you would split percentiles. We have forty-one percent of students at tier two in reading and that means that they would need an in-class support likely. So they might need a different level of a book, they might need some extra practice at home. And then if you look at tier three, seven percent, those are students who are getting pull-out services for ELA. Someone who would be going to see a special education teacher and someone who's probably about two grade levels probably below reading level. And so I'm happy with seven percent as a tier three intervention. And I think that speaks to the work that our reading specialists are doing, our reading professionals are doing, and our classroom teachers, identifying and differentiating for those, for those students. Below, you'll see a breakdown, looks like, you know, we need a little bit extra support maybe in vocabulary. We can look at some programs that do that, DIBELS actually has a vocabulary support inside of their program. And so I'm integrating those into my Student Opportunity Act application and I'll bring that to you at your next meeting. And math, um, it's interesting because we have, you know, again, small number at tier three. Uh, larger number and we have sixty percent looking at tier two. Um, and then, and, and math is really our target this year and was last year as well. You know, how can we improve our math scores? Um, and so we're gonna continue to use IXL. Um, teachers are starting to use some additional tools. Um, my students, my school improvement plan for next year is really stressing a minimal it is. Uh, differentiation and just, you know, identifying, using IXL to make, they have much nicer plans that you can. Give to students that will give them their skills and so IXL is really improving. Their ability to find where they need to practice and then, and then move on from there. So, um, so that, that's my assessment update on that. Any questions about that? That was from the quarterly report.
It's great to have all of this, access to all of this data.
It really is. It wouldn't be possible without the licenses that Superintendent Parentozzi referenced. Even when an MCAS first come out, I remember we'd be using highlighters trying to, you know, it was, it was, we spent our whole afternoon just trying to get the data. Uh, and now it's really prepared for you. That, you know, and our data, and our, our, um. Dashboard is helpful because that takes the MCAS data and gets it to us. Um, I went to a professional development workshop that was some time ago. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions about the schedule. Um, but it was again driven by the teachers, what they were hoping for. Um, Ms. LaCorcia had came back, talked about uh the integrated literacy block. Um, moving past just guided reading and into uh word work. And other skills that students can uh work on during their small group instruction. We also had um Jerry Morris back for Collins writing. Again, that came out of our curriculum group. Uh, they were looking for reading uh professional development. And this spring we'll be planning our committee for the next year using our curriculum committees.
Are you do, are you still doing surveys after that professional development being?
We sure are.
Okay.
Yeah, we sure are.
So it'll be that coming.
Great, yeah, it was really strong. Um, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm happy to say they, you know, really happy. That's, that's how we got to, you know, kind of. Bringing back the folks we had from the last one to this one. Um, and they also, you know, mentioned they wanted to have time to, you know, have self-guided professional development. Uh, and so we did that as well. Yeah.
I'm Kevin Avay, um, I'm Janita Avay. Uh, your curriculum group looking at um everything that's coming out from folks that are talking about science of reading. And um, that there's, you know, there's just a lot of conversation about sort of. That the science of reading doesn't hold up for some longstanding stuff, you know, materials that a lot of schools in that sense have used.
Yep.
Been really showing how reading education needs to happen differently. Um, started with like using Orin, going ahead and things like that. So whether where you were having all of that.
I feel really good about it. Um, I've seen what they've been, you know, the reports, they focused on towns. Like, like, you know, they meant in the globe, it was Lexington and I think Winchester. I can't remember, but it was the towns that. Yes, the kids that are gonna do well, do well, but then you have your small groups, like you say, disadvantage or high need students. And they don't do well with some of the programs that towns have used for years.
Yes.
Um, and so we do use foundations, which is put out by uh Wilson Reading, which is a strong program. It's prescriptive. It's uh research based.
Yep.
Um, so I feel good about that. That's been on my mind though.
Yeah.
Um, we do use Fontes and Canal, which probably is what they were talking about with, we should be moving away from.
Yes.
Um.
Pretty strong language about.
Yeah.
How Fontes and Canal is not holding water.
Yeah.
For not even just, just advantage kids, but it, but like as I look, I look at. The forty percent that are in that block.
Yeah.
You know, um, on the I ready.
Yeah.
And I, I think there's some, I think there's some risk there, so I wanted to see how you were thinking on that.
Yeah, so you, you approved, um, I think it was a purchase of around two thousand dollars for decodables.
Yep.
And these are um books that have similar letter sounds in them. Um, and you know, you're focusing on the silent E, you know, and your book has that in it. Um, and so we, we have a nice series of those. Thanks to your support.
Yep.
And um, yeah.
And is that connected to uh whatever we're using around science of, the science of reading books or is that?
No, it is. That's exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, that is, okay, great, that's right.
Yeah, they're exactly talking about decodables. Um, you know, more prescriptive, whereas Fontes and Canal will take any book and then try to level it.
Right.
And doesn't have a pad, doesn't have THs all throughout the book.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, yeah, so we are, yeah, I'm, I'm abreast of it and. Um, and I think that Sarah's help, you know, Sarah's help is great and I know that our, our teachers are coming out of college recently, you know, so we.
It's great, yeah.
Which is helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, so I believe that concludes my report. I don't think there were other items that I had to. Review. If there's any questions, um, I mean.
Please roll them.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's great, yeah.
My, my pleasure. If anything comes up, let me know.
So moving back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The slittings.
So, um, the slittings update, um.
Oh, man.
It shall be a wordless report.
Oh, excellent. Don't be short.
Keep it short.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing I'm gonna say is that uh, keep your eye on that gym roof. Still doesn't leak.
Okay.
But it's old. It looks terrible, but if you remember, I had a core taken and there's three roofs. So, um, at some point, um, a new roof is gonna have to be uh installed. The building inspector told me that if you put a new roof on. Uh, you're gonna have to re-insulate it to the new standards, which are pretty dramatic, so we're talking about multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars. The good news is the MSBA has reinstated its repair program. After a two-year hiatus.
That's good.
So, keep your eye on that and keep, you know, next superintendent uh maybe put in for it and see what happens. Um, our free and reduced lunch, our poverty is low, therefore, you know, you're probably talking about. Twenty, twenty-five percent from MSBA. It may not even be worth it. And because you have to jump through so many hoops. You have to have, you know, the architects involved and the, the project managers that, you know, it's a roof. You may be, going through MSBA may be financially negative. By the time you get your, but that's, that needs to be a study. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, other things, February vacation, uh, our new librarian, Norrie had a really, uh, this obviously would've been your packet for the thirteenth. But lots of activities for our students during vacation. And the annual report, the town report cover contest is in your racket, if any of you, this is not limited to children. Uh, uh, it is limited to people with artistic ability, therefore I can't do anything. But if anybody wants to uh send uh Kristen Taylor a copy of some of their artwork, uh, the artwork obviously should be about. Um, Nahad. You know, the scene of Nahad or something about Nahad for the annual town book. So that's going ongoing. And Madam Chair, that's my report.
Fabulous. Well, we've already discussed the uh, the budget, so we'll move on to the uh search update with the superintendent. I'm very excited. I think everyone knows that we have two files. That we are inviting back um on March twenty-fifth and March twenty-sixth. To spend the day here on meeting with uh everyone here at school and other town officials. And we'll conclude with meeting lots of us. Um, so it's very exciting. Um, Patty, I will mention this, is that a really long, is that a typically long time for them to wait? It's not gonna take them so long, it's a difficult. It's like another month.
Yeah, okay, well, but in, in speaking with Glenn.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't wanna lose someone because they have to wait so long. No, it's okay.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's okay. I mean, we always run the risk if someone were drunk.
Yeah, you never.
But I, I think, yeah, good.
Um, Madam Chair, one of the candidates was a participant in this evening's meeting.
Oh, great.
So, uh.
He's still on.
He's still on.
Yeah.
So, uh. Uh, Madam Chair, I will look for your guidance in terms of scheduling the um. Visitation days. And uh, I know you had a schedule that began at eleven AM and I had one that began today at eight AM.
Yes, I know, we have to coordinate. I know, it's gonna be somewhere in the.
One of us obviously gets up earlier than the other.
You wanna start as early as I do, you don't.
So we'll schedule those and uh, I know the, are, there are individuals at. The town hall and municipal officials. Uh, and I have spoken to Tony Barletta and he will schedule uh whatever you decide. He does, he definitely wants to uh meet with the candidates. He definitely wants uh Allison Nieto, the uh finance director, to meet with the candidates. Um, we thought that the uh, the chiefs, fire and police should meet.
Yes.
Ask a question or two. Our faculty uh and staff would want to meet with them. Um, and um, you know, let's create a schedule and we'll go from there.
Yeah, no.
Now, the only question I have.
Yes.
Is I saw one document that said that the interviews would start at seven PM. I don't know where I saw that. It's gone. But one of the meeting, one of the interview dates is.
This school.
School committee meeting.
I know.
So if you wanna start at six, I. I recommend you start both of them at six, not one at seven, one at six.
I, or we change the meeting date from school.
Can, can, what, is it the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, Patty?
Yes. Yes.
So, okay, cuz I think the sheet that, I thought that we had filled out the times for six o'clock on all of them.
We, yeah, no, we had done six and I, I know Gina, um, if you had one of the, one of the dates.
Oh, on Monday, I think Gina.
Oh, yes, yeah, seven, so, but, yeah, to be fair, you know, to vote candidates, I'd like to set the agenda to be the same.
Yeah.
So my recommendation should be to move the school committee. Uh, meeting that we have scheduled for that Tuesday, the twenty-sixth to alternate date. Do we have the calendar? Of the.
Uh, Madam Chair, technically, you're not moving it. Because your interviews are a school committee meeting.
Yes.
You're adding, you're adding a school committee.
Yes, adding another. Yes.
So.
Adding a regular school committee meeting.
Yeah, you're adding a school committee meeting for regular business. Yeah.
Because the interviews will be held in open session, just so.
Yeah.
It's like, I don't have the dates for anything, but does anybody have the dates for you all?
I think we are open. Yeah. And I believe it's the ninth of.
The next one is April ninth.
And then April twenty-third.
And then, then April twenty-third.
And then six will be huge.
Right.
So April second is open.
Yeah. The second one. April second to add a meeting?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just to clarify, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, we're still aiming for at six o'clock and then we would.
Seven for gold.
At seven o'clock and then we're adding a meeting for April second for, but keeping the ninth.
I know, but it seems like a lot of.
That means that we're meeting three weeks in a row. I'm just, that just means we're meeting three weeks in a row.
It's for meeting three times in a few weeks. I mean, well, we're meeting four times.
We're meeting four times because it's Monday, the twenty-fifth, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, the following Tuesday, the second and the ninth.
Cause maybe that are doing a really long meeting.
I, I just think that, I, that would be really hard for me. I'm just gonna be honest.
It would be.
Do we have any, um. Just do we have any?
Could go for about two hours.
What?
All right.
Not the interview, but the um. Agenda items, are there any things that we have to vote upon before? We are to the budget, so.
It would just be unless there's something I don't know about Tony and the people on policies.
Oh, I have policies, yes.
Yes. I would try to get all of them.
Uh, there's, uh, there are two proposals, one that we promote a school committee meeting. And the other we add a school committee meeting and what Michelle's raising is that then there'd be a school committee back to back, like.
It'd be several weeks of meetings.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, two, nine, sixteen in April.
Yeah, I, I, I would be, not six, that's during.
No, the twenty-fifth.
I think we should leave the nine and twenty-three and not add another meeting, I think.
I mean, the other thing is could we have just a, a abbreviated.
Yep.
Agenda for after the interview. I don't know, I don't, or it would be a two-hour. So we, like, potential, like, nine, so at nine we start a meeting, I don't think that.
That would be, yeah, I think people would be exhausted.
And the interview doesn't start until seven, sorry.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I. I think we would just, we just, maybe we split the agenda items and policies between the ninth and the, um, yeah, the ninth and the twenty-third.
Would that work for building and all the other things, Tony, if we just, if we didn't have?
Here, here's, here's my.
Or we extended our meeting on the March twelve.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Thirteen, uh, twelve, twelve, yeah, you're right.
Sorry.
So we could make March twelve like a, a long meeting. I don't know how many policies you can get through between now and then.
Oh, we did, oh, okay, yeah.
I think we're gonna be a.
I mean, there, what about like, could we do the?
Here. Madam Chair, here's the problem.
Okay.
On April thirtieth, the new school committee is seated.
Yes, I know.
So the policy should be done by the end of April. Uh, because the new members of the school committee won't have any history of reviewing policies. Um.
How close? Like, if we continue at the pace that we're actually really gonna get there.
Done in February, right?
Oh, over April.
Yeah.
Two, three.
No, no, no.
I think we can do it. How about, how about this?
Right.
Uh, on the twenty-sixth of March, at the end of your interview. If there are any, I'll do a, you can do an abbreviated bill roll and any policies if necessary.
Okay, yeah, we.
We just, just do bills and policies. But my gut tells me I'm gonna, we're gonna be able to get to policies. Because one of the meetings I have scheduled, we can do. Um, on April ninth or twenty-third in combination with the policies you're approving. One of them is simply to, to remove a whole bunch of policies from your manual. That should take seconds.
Oh, yeah.
Cuz you've all seen those already. Remember, over, over time, you know, we're gonna remove this, we're gonna remove that. Um, so let me work on it. Um. So I would say, keep it March twelfth. March twenty-sixth after the interview if necessary for bills. Um, I can always pay, I mean, if it's only five bills, I'll just pay him just like you did last time.
Yeah.
And then the ninth and the twenty-third and don't add the second.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay?
I think that sounds good. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Is there anything that we need to discuss in regards to a long-range planning? I don't think.
Madam Chair, the only thing I have thought of is that the school improvement council, the school council is working on the school improvement plan. It would seem reasonable. That the next school committee and superintendent work on the district plan in the fall rather than us. Putting together a district plan for which I won't be here and several members of the school committee.
Yes, I, I would agree, yeah.
Yeah, that is.
Madam Chair, if I may, I can let you know that I was able to bring into our current, our new, you, which you'll see, our new school improvement plan. Has uh three strategies for um multi-grade class cooperation. So, we are, and, and we are including that in terms of differentiation, uh, project-based learning, something we've spoken about.
Yeah.
Uh, those are in our, um, those are in a, those will be in our school group.
Right.
Which relate to the, I think that's.
Yeah.
Relating to what you're talking.
Right, I think that's gonna be so beneficial for everybody.
Uh, three strategies to um. Uh, three strategies to, um, teach multi-grade, multi-ability or multi-skilled classes.
That's great.
You know, thinking about, right, we already have multi, it's already likely have multi-grade classes because you have a student who can play a first grade level and a
Yeah.
reading and a third grade level.
Reading's a model, that's my model.
Yeah. So, we're working on it. But I'm happy to work with the new superintendent on a, uh, a, a longer range plan.
That sounds great. Okay, so moving on to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school calendar.
Madam Chair, if I may, items marked seven D is the two thousand twenty four, twenty five calendar, which has been amended to show the incoming twenty five, twenty six kindergarten screening on June third and fourth on two thousand twenty of two, on two thousand, on those two dates in two thousand twenty five, excuse me. And the screening has been removed from the fall.
And kindergarten is started a day earlier.
Yes, therefore.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that's what we discussed a lot, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think if I were a new parent looking at this, I would know exactly what would start.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's been previewed by the, uh, N T A.
Excellent.
All right, Madam Chair, it's your calendar, therefore I need a, a motion, a second and a vote.
Motion, yeah. I'll make the motion to approve the two thousand twenty, August two thousand twenty four through June two thousand twenty five Johnson School Calendar, mark seven D. Should I have a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And Madam Chair, the next document labeled seven E is the amended current year schedule, which we will put up immediately after your approval. What this does is it puts the incoming two thousand twenty four, twenty five kindergarten screening
Oh.
on June fourth and fifth of this year.
Of this year.
Because we.
Want to be consistent, yes.
So oddly enough, that means that this year there were two kindergarten screenings during the school year.
Yeah, I have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the amended Johnson School Calendar, August twen- two thousand twenty three through June two thousand twenty four, mark seven.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I have calendars out of the way and policies here.
Yeah, we will, we will begin to post and publicize those, uh, immediately if not soon. Okay, here we go. Full business, right?
Full business.
Policy A C.
Do you want to get the?
Okay.
Yes. Okay. All right.
Let us know when you're ready.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve policy A C, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy A C A, non-discrimination on the basis of sex, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy A D, mission statement, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy A D C, tobacco products on school premises prohibited, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy B B, school committee legal status, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy B G C, policy revision and review, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy B I D, school committee member compensation and expenses, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy C A, administration role, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy G B, school superintendent, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy C B D, superintendent's contract, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy C B I, evaluation of the superintendent, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy C C V, staff relations, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy C E, administrative councils, cabinets and committees, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve policy C H C A, approval of P M books and directives, second reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Getting good this, yeah.
Nice job.
Yeah, you're really flying.
All right, moving on to new business.
Madam Chair, uh, in your packet labeled eight A, you have the district report card, I don't believe we need to talk about this very much. Uh, except in conjunction with the special education determination, which is next. Uh, I did want you to have this both hard copy and electronically in case someone, I mean, cuz it's on the, the, um, D E S E website, so I wanted you to have it in case somebody called you about anything, but it certainly shows that we are in the sixty second percentile. Uh, and we are sub, making substantial proj- progress towards all of our goals. And there's a lot of things in this report card that don't pertain to us as an elementary dis- district, like dropout rate and high school graduation. But a lot of it does pertain to us and it's a positive report and it's, comes out annually. Then the next item, uh, A C, because we already did the Massachusetts Partnerships for Unit A B, is the, uh, document that I have already shared with you electronically that shows that the Nahat Public Schools earned twenty out of twenty possible points on the group rate or one hundred percent. So we are evaluated by the D E S E as meeting one hundred percent of our special education goals. Now, I wanna tie this into what Mr. Andrews reported before about tier three. We have about twenty four percent of our students consuming special education services. And we only have seven percent of our A L A students and five percent of our math students requiring tier three intervention. I mean, that's amazing. I mean, really amazing, it's a, it's a commentary on the high quality of classroom instruction and classroom tutoring that's going on in this school. When you think about one out of four or less of our special education students are high risk. I mean, that's not the norm.
Yeah, that is true, that's not the norm.
And, uh, I just wanted to highlight that for you and now you have both electronically and hard copy the data that shows the, um, and please stop me anytime, eight D, I know it's been a long mic, is the D E S E school attending chi- children report. This shows you where our kids are. And it's self-explanatory, it's every grade. Please note that there are zeros where we pay for this. It's a little deceptive because our Swampscott kids are considered out of district public school placement, even though.
Ayes.
So you have to combine the first column and the fifth column to get two hundred and twenty five. Because if you look at it at first, you go, oh my God, nobody's going to school here. And the reality is we have a very low percentage of children in broken home private and schools. I mean, the typical district that's in the thirty plus percent. Okay? And you may wanna digest that a little bit and email me a question if you have any. Um, I'm gonna keep going until somebody says no.
So I need to ask a question on the district report card.
Sure.
Um, on chronic absenteeism, right, which is, you know, something we should always, always care about, um, even though the state is now overly focused on it. Twenty three, almost twenty four percent of our kids are, um, according to this, are missing more than ten percent of the school year. What kinds of, um, interventions is Johnson School doing on the student attendance and this? And just for context, because, eh, you know, I, um, this is way lower than like what I see in college schools, high schools for really marginalized kids. Um, but it's still in, in, I think it's important to know like what kinds of interventions it's doing and so it's a little comparatively, but I think almost forty or something, yeah.
I'd be happy to speak to that Superintendent Hartozzi.
Sure.
I would. Um, we do take steps in terms of, I work with, um, Ms. April and send letters and make phone calls to families whose, whose students are chronically absent, um, for reasons that we don't recognize as being COVID. I'll say, I don't spend a lot of time tracking down students who are on vacation. Uh, if it's two day, we, you know, flights are so maddening expensive, if you don't go two days before or after a break now, it seems like, you know, we, so we do have a bit of a, you know, before breaks. Um, coming back to this, this, this week, Monday was great, we had great attendance on Monday this week. Uh, so I keep a tr- I keep track of it and the, the great thing is now we had these boards outside every room. I walk down the hall and I see who's absent, they've been, they're all checked off, it's easier than going in on a thing with the size of a school. Um, and I have seen an improvement, um, with phone call, you know, by doing phone calls. Um, we've done wellness checks, we have at least, uh, to, you know, when we don't get a phone call from the family.
Yeah.
Um, the students that I see that are chronically absent, I, I don't, um, it's, it's a small number that of, of students that I, I think are chronically absent. Um, so I, I feel pretty good about it. And there's also tardiness, we're trying to keep track of that and that's improved too.
That's good, okay.
Yeah, as you could, as you know, we're at or above the state average in every attendance category.
Yeah.
The entire state is seeing the, uh, call it a COVID hangover. The other thing I know, which is so frustrating to parents, students, faculty and administration, is our dentists, doctors, pediatricians, et cetera, won't schedule the kids after school.
Totally, yeah.
Yes, very hard.
Yes, very, very.
You just can't get it.
Yeah.
And the, the parents are, you know, if you have a one o'clock appointment, you pull your kid out, you go somewhere, it's an hour and a half, you go around, like, we're not going back. I don't believe it.
Right. The orthodontist, yeah.
Yeah.
It's impossible, yeah.
Because we get counted, we get the credit for the school day.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if it's a, if they're, if they're in their castle.
Yep, okay.
That's a good question, we are, you know, we do use, uh, school brains to, uh, keep track of that.
Yeah.
And Riley Edmonds is good also about calling parents.
Yeah, the, the, the interesting thing is that the state considers a student chronically absent at eighteen absences.
Yep, eighteen.
Our average is twelve point five. So even though any absence is something we work on. You know, we don't have a, a lot of kids who are chronically absent. Would, to reflect for a moment on Mr., what Mr. Andrews says, said, we have a handful of students who are really chronically absent.
Mm-hmm. I wouldn't even say, I would, if you, if I may, I wouldn't even say it's a handful, I would say it's probably, I mean, three, three, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's all.
Three's my.
Yeah.
For the small handful.
Yeah, and we know exactly, you know, yeah, and, and the ones that I.
Is that a dog can?
And it's, it's gotten better too.
Yes.
With our attention.
That's good.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, house visit, you know.
Good, right.
Um.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Um, Madam Chair, item eight E is the Ecology School Fall two thousand twenty four overnight field trip. There's a permission, um, there's a request, there's a lot of information.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I will turn this over to the principal.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, this is one of my, um, you know, this is a, a great experience that started before I came and I'm really pleased to be able to help continue it. Um, they had a new facility last time we went, River Bend Farming. And it's a great, it's a great experience for the students, they have a great chance to bond, you go every other year. Um, it's the same, uh, leader that they've had at the school since I've been here, she's wonderful, she knows my email and, you know, we talking. Uh, and so, um, I'll ask, uh, two teachers and myself to go. Um, I'm usually the male chaperone, which is helpful. Um, students, you know, stay overnight, we do two nights, three days, which is great for this number of students, it's usually their first experience way from home without their parents, without their family, often, you know, um, so, and it's, and like I said, we, um, they, they learn during mealtime with their food, where their food comes from, they compost it afterward. You see the compost pile with the food, I get inspired, you know, what we can do here. Um, great science programs, kids act, they, they take on different roles during the food service time, uh, have jobs, we eat as a group. Um, they have chores, um, and lessons, they have night lessons, day lessons, we're in charge of the kids at night, um, and, and we join the teaching the day. But, um, it's, and the bus was expensive last time, I'm gonna try to get a jump on it this time, see if we can get something less expensive. Um, the cost per student is four hundred dollars, but we do, uh, give a full tuition to anybody who needs it and partial tuition. Um.
That's what I was gonna have, did I think, was it funded the last time?
Uh, the bus was funded last time, we typically, but I, the cost of the trip wasn't funded.
Wasn't?
Yeah, cuz I didn't remember eight thousand dollar check.
Yeah.
Um, so the P T O helps us out.
I think I can remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bus, I believe, was, was twelve hundred, this time what I decided to do was put a little bit of the transportation cost in the cost for the students.
Okay.
Um, because I didn't expect the bus cost to jump so high and the availability to go so low. Uh, we just, I thought we weren't gonna be able to go last time, we couldn't, we had to get a coach bus.
Yeah.
Um, and it was, I think, twelve or fourteen hundred dollars.
How much is the tuition per families?
Uh, well, so I'm, it's, uh, four hundred per student with some of the cost in the, um, in, in transportation. Um, we use student activity funds as well.
Mm-hmm.
And that's usually the, usually we'll have two or three students that get, uh, a full, uh, you know, scholarship and any, we don't turn anyone away, I mean, I don't even, I don't ask for pay stubs or anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, if you need it, you need it and you, you know, we take care of it, so. Um, if it's, you know, any difficulty or someone wants a discount, we'll discount. Um, but it's well worth it and, um, we'll give, and I actually let parents know about it la- I think it was probably three weeks ago that I'd be requesting it, so, you know, if they wanna start, you know, put twenty dollars away a week or something.
Yeah, it's very exciting to get that email.
Oh, good, 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 good. I hate to surprise people in September, what I'm saying, we're only late this week. Yeah, me too.
Seven times, seven ways.
Thank you, Mr. P. So, um, I, what I'm doing tonight is requesting that we have an out-of-state district, um, field trip, um, and it requires your approval.
I will happily, I'm sure you'll approve the, uh, Ecology School, uh, Fall twenty twenty four eleven.
Asti.
Do I? Not out of state, out of state.
I said out of.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So, um, Mr. Andrews, as soon as you have the date finalized, would you please, uh, inform us?
I sure will, I sure will, we, we had a choice, you know, we can put it up together some choices. And so, uh, I also asked if anyone, uh, celebrates, uh, Jewish holidays because it makes it a little bit easier for us. Uh, and if we have zero, um, to get dates.
Yeah.
Um, that are against, you know, that are ending on our, we try to go, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, and I think probably a lot of schools take that, take that approach.
Yeah.
And so we put in dates that, that I thought maybe other districts would have, few students that wouldn't be able to.
Yeah.
Um, and that's why I asked that question. Um, and that's why I asked that question.
Circuit breaker, purple?
Yeah, Madam Chair, in your packet, um, I've talked about the circuit breaker, three types of circuit breaker this year. And in my, um, investigations, filings, et cetera, et cetera, I came across a wonderful chart, which I think take all my words and boils them down, and I don't, I'm, I'm sure you're like me, when you see it, it makes a much bigger impression. So item labeled eight F is the circuit breaker for services provided fiscal twenty four, that's July two thousand twenty three to June two thousand twenty four. So, the extraordinary relief is what happens is when our tuition and instructional cost is twenty five percent higher than in fiscal twenty three or last year. And we have, we've already applied for that. The new one is the reserve relief. This is seventy five million dollars until the government takes some of it for districts with net eligible fiscal twenty four tuition and instructional expenditures that are seven point five percent higher than previous and an increase of greater than point five in net school spending. So we've applied for those two already. Um, I hired, uh, Debbie Cannell, our former special education director, to do that application with Chris and I. And then the final year and year reimbursements, this is the typical circuit breaker. This money comes next year. So the first two, we're gonna get the money this year, and we need it.
That's how you got the budget.
Yeah.
Being got it. That's, this is how I am going to, uh, balance this year's budget and probably have some, um, free cash. Next year, I, you know, because we're spending so much this year, next year's circuit breaker check, which is, uh, fifty three thousand dollars this year total, four checks of thirteen something, uh, it shouldn't be dramatically higher.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
But I thought this would help you understand it.
Yeah.
I'm keeping it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's so, it's so helpful, cuz I think you, you just, you know, when you're not involved in, as you are, easy to forget that they're a different thing. It can help us when we have, uh, special education classes that were not respected.
Okay, Madam Chair, item eight G is a detailed bad news. I've said this to you, but this is the actual document. The, uh, North Shore Educational Consortium member districts, and on the fifth page of this document, you see the net member districts, we are going to be assessed thirty two thousand dollars more than we had anticipated for tuition for our students there. And that is because they have a huge problem with their building. Uh, which you can see on the very top of the second page. It's a one point eight million dollar HVAC capital project. Okay? So, before June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, we will be expending thirty two thousand dollars of unanticipated tuition. The good news is, us superintendents convinced the executive director not to do a capital assessment. Think about why. Capital assessments are not circuit breaker. You're gonna increase the tuition. So we'll probably get some of the money back as circuit breaker next year.
Interesting, okay.
So if somebody's tuition was forty seven thousand dollars, she's, it's gonna increase to fifty eight thousand dollars. So that's circuit breaker. Anything over about forty six, okay? So it's a, a small amount of sunshine on a rainy day. I love it, yeah.
And back to the topic, are my, are my, this is based upon the number of students I attend, but the size of our district?
That is based on the consortium agreement, which is based on population of students.
Of students that attend the school or students that attend the populations?
You know, we pay for students.
Yeah, so.
Our assessment is to keep this place going.
Go, yeah, yeah.
Um, and typically, we don't, we, I, I tell you, typically, it's ten thousand dollars either. If you remember during COVID, there was a five thousand dollar, you may not. There was a five thousand dollar increase one year for to fifteen.
Right.
So this is really unusual.
Yes.
And this had to go through the board, I'm a member of the board, I mean, by line, if they close that building because the ATRAC is unsuitable for students and staff, what do we do?
I understand.
What do we do with our students?
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah. So, Madam Chair, let's have some fun with policies.
I was gonna say, back to policies, we go.
So, the first one is EBB. Don't you try to sneak away.
Yeah, it seems like you're not.
Gotcha, I hope you all have a good one.
It's nice.
Same here, yeah, yeah, it's Michael, yeah.
Um, we had amended this policy on, in two thousand seventeen, it's been updated on two thousand twenty four. Um, if you take as an example, it's language, so if you look at number three, our policy says in emergencies. This policy says in extreme emergency, so it's minimal. Well, I recommend you give it every consideration to change. Policy EBC, emergency plans. Our current policy is here. The new policy is, in my opinion, very similar, once again, if you look at, um, number, blah, 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 blah. Number seven, for example, our current policy says, in the event the school possesses automated, blah, 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 the location of all, blah, blah, blah. So this one says the location, and the reason is because we're now obliged to have them. So it can't say, in the event the school possesses, because that would be a violation of law. So, again, minor, I recommend. Uh, face coverings are not in our policy. Um.
I have a lot of, a lot to say about this.
Go for it.
Um, it seems to be very outdated. Um, and I didn't know if it should be a policy regarding just general illness as opposed to a specific.
Oh, very, yeah.
And also, you know, the guidance for these coverings for people who are unvaccinated, like, that's outdated. So I'm, I, I'm not in favor of putting, if this is what the MFA, MASC is, I'd rather even more generic to what the National Public Health.
But.
Of public health.
Yeah, I, I, I was just saying, apparently, like, even right now, the guidelines are changing.
So to put some of them in place, like.
Yes, this was last updated.
No, it's, right, too, a lot has happened since then.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, so I, I thought it's one, and I would like to know, this is a no.
Here's, here's my recommendation, since I completely agree with you. Uh, you don't need it.
Right.
All right.
Bye-bye. So we're gonna nix that.
Because we are obligated to follow.
Department of Public Health.
Yes.
Department of Health rules, regulations, and the law.
Similar to what we took out.
Why, why get involved?
And, 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 yeah, this is our sort of regulation, and I have it, why are we needing to do anything additional?
I agree.
Yeah, and, and you're absolutely right, the guideline recommendation now is to treat COVID as any other infectious disease. That if there's no fever or symptoms unmedicated for twenty four hours, the student can come back to school. Interestingly, the CDC has not put it out, it's been ten days. I just had the conversation with Cheryl about this, cuz, um, we have someone. And she said, I don't know what to do, so are you gonna go by the five days?
Yeah.
Cuz.
Yeah, whatever the current in-place policy is.
Yeah. Okay, policy EC, buildings and grounds management, once again, minor because, um, you know, for example, the last paragraph, the last sentence, we are, says the building administrator, blah, 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 this says within separate schools, the building administrator. For us, that's important. Because since we don't have separate schools, it reverts to super penitent.
Right, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's important, so I recommend that we change. Okay, we do not have a security camera policy, we need one. So I recommend that this policy be placed in the manual. I read it, um, the important thing is that the superintendent's responsible to make sure everything's not wrong.
Right.
Okay. Uh, walkers and riders, not in our current policy manual.
I did have a question about this, only because I wasn't certain within our town if the school is situated such that four to six are more than a mile and a half.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering too, because if that, I mean, to imagine having to transport kids in our town.
Yeah, I, I don't believe we need this.
Okay.
At all.
I agree, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't shooting ourselves in the foot.
That's right.
Okay.
We don't want any part of it, historically, we have not transported, interestingly, in my previous job in Somerville, we, I have worked in the two districts in the Commonwealth that don't transport.
Yeah.
Isn't that interesting?
I mean, it's just Chelsea doesn't really matter, because it's so small.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so we're next thing this month.
We're not gonna put that in.
Keep it up, Michelle. I, I was.
We did these, and I was like, come on.
Uh, we do not have a policy for school bus safety program. Um, you don't need one because it's matched down the wall, but it doesn't hurt because we do this.
It is gone.
But the question that I had on this, though, because I, I always, um, this seems to be, um, uh, who's the ownership of problems on the bus? And we don't have access to the children, you don't, or, you know, and, and, and so this, reading this policy would say, you know, that this, you or, um, sorry, I can't remember who was the person, but.
I, I think you may be on the next policy, this one is school bus safety program.
Yeah, yeah, I am, oh, oh.
This one's, this one's.
I need the. Oh, well, okay, but I think.
This one we do, for example, we don't have school buses, but kids take field trips.
Oh.
So we run them through the safety program with the Hilly Bus Center.
Okay.
So I recommend we put this one in.
Okay.
The school conduct of school buses is the one you were referring to, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yes, but I was reading the, as they were the same thing. But I see you're pointing to D L U, so.
Right.
And.
So, the authority for enforcing school community requirements on student, I don't know if it will rest with the principal.
That's right.
Does that happen? It ha, with, but with, not with, with Mr. Andrews?
No.
Right, with.
With the middle school and high school principal, that's.
Right, so my, I guess, it, it seems, um, odd to me that we would have a policy saying what somebody else will do.
Actually, we're not saying what they're doing. We say the authority for enforcing the requirements will rest with the principal, we're not telling them what to do, we're just saying it's yours. That's how I read it, I may be wrong.
Okay, so maybe we need to describe what principal, like, I don't know what the right, right language be, principal of the attending school? Of the, the principal of this, the school, the child, the child of the parents, of students.
Let me do some research.
Do you know what I mean?
I do.
But I just wanna be clear, because I feel like, uh, you know, when I have brought forward things, it's been, well, nah, it needs to, you know, and I'm like, ah, Mr. Andrews, it's like, uh, you, and you both were correct to say, no, it's not. So I just, you know, wanna be clear.
Okay, um, I think something like, the principal of the school where the student attends or the attending principal or something like that. Because Mr. Andrews may in fact, on a field trip, where a bus is involved, have to do it.
Yes. Yes, yes.
So it has to be all three of them.
Yes.
So I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Uh, free and reduced price food services, that's in the current manual, I believe we're fine. We don't need to change. Negotiation goals is our, there's our current one. And minor changes. And I think it's basically the reference. So I recommend we add the references. Negotiations legal status, we have it in our manual, there's a current one. Interestingly, this one has been shortened dramatically.
Yeah.
Um, there must be a reason that the attorneys don't want all that gobbledygook in there, and I recommend that we listen to the attorneys.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The thing I like about the quoted, the quoted sentence, is the town can't get involved unless you ask them to. I like that. I have been in places where the town administrator is tempted to insert him or herself into the negotiations to make sure that money was well spent, in their opinion. Okay, HF, school committee negotiating agents, this is similar but reorganized. And I recommend that we reorganize. I didn't see a lot of difference, but it just, it, it does read better. Um, current K A, school community relations, this one is significantly changed. I recommend that we update ours. K B E, relation with parent organization. They wanted to say boosters?
Yeah, I think that some organizations are.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay. Typically, sports boosters, right? Yeah, and that's fine with me, it is reorganized and simplified, and I recommend we reorganize and simplify. K D B, public's right to know. And the new one is similar. The important thing is, I read this, is the emphasis on what you don't do. And I recommend that we, um, not, there's not much difference. What I did notice is thirty A is removed. So, there must be a reason. K D D, news media relations, releases. Minimal changes. Obviously, the date's different. I recommend we update. I recommend we update ours and then relations with non-public schools.
I mean, because we don't live in an area where we've ever had to approve a private school, like I don't know.
I wouldn't bother.
Yeah, I was gonna say this makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me, let me tell you why.
Or special education either, okay, and I'm done with that.
See, the opening sentence says, the school committee will approve a private school when it's satisfied that the school equals that of the municipality's public schools. Now, let me tell you why I don't think we we should add this policy, cuz nobody in this state does it. When I was in New York State as superintendent, there was a Bible, a Bible school in my community. And the commissioner of education directed me to go inspect it. I went to inspect it and I called Tom Sobel up and I said, who was my superintendent in Scarsdale for fifteen years, I knew the commissioner. I said, Tom, I inspected it, he said, what do you think? I said, I don't get between people and their god.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm gonna put current okay.
Okay.
And we are done.
Do we have any other committee business that was left in this stuff?
Yep.
Any?
The only thing I would say, Kate, is, and it's not even like really a announcement, but um. It would be Mr. Andrews. Put out a notice about this school committee positions open. Would that even be okay or appropriate? I am a little bit worried about those positions, but I am.
What, I'm sorry, I'm just.
We know anybody that's coming after.
I mean, there's some people that expressed interest, I've talked to a lot of people, but I don't, I don't know, maybe some people are actually putting it in. But I, my scope of discussions is only as big as the people I talk to, so. If Mr. Andrews were to send out, um, maybe on the, um, parent square, parent square, that. That there are school committee positions open in the.
Oh, okay.
In the, um. You know, as we could word it, we could word it.
Or like that there are.
As it, as it's, well, and as it's time for town, you know, um.
Just with the link to the website, yeah, that your hashtag, your papers are due, like.
Very soon.
It's a party.
And that's true, related to the fact that we're not running again, I mean, you know, if 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 that people should know that if you're interested in getting involved in the school committee.
Yeah.
That the.
There is positions open.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We can do it.
I would respectfully recommend. That I'll write it and the chair will send it out.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
Sure.
We don't want our.
That would be, that would be great.
Yeah, oh, no, right, yeah, I only say cuz he's the one that.
Yeah.
I'll do the actual.
He'll do the actual.
He'll do the butt pushing, but it'll come from the chair of the committee.
First, yeah.
Yeah.
Know how many positions or do we, three?
Well, I I guess that was the question for the third and I don't know when the, cuz officially you're still in, so I, you know, officially Gina and I are out.
Well, right, so I had agreed to take over Lauren's last year. So that when I ran, I had one year for my term and then I obviously didn't feel right just stopping after the year. But I can't commit to two more years.
Right.
So.
You're, you're.
Um, so basically whoever runs for, right, like you and Gina have, would, the the people that replaced the two of you have, would have three, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that you need to say like when you're.
Like, like you can go until the end of the school year if you wanted, Leanna, you didn't have to stop that.
Oh, okay, cuz I was under the impression that that's not the case.
So I was talking, you, I mean, you, you could leave whenever, whenever you wanted to. But from my understanding is that if you gave notice and somebody, so like Patty and I were. Right, you were voted in from the the uh, special meeting with the.
Yes.
Uh, selectmen because we were voted in mid-cycle and not through a town ballot, so. We were voted in mid-cycle by the selectmen and then we were on the following ballot, is how it went.
Right.
Once the term, the true term was up, was up.
Yeah.
But my understanding is that if the timing aligns that you have given your notice of leaving with the town vote. That position can actually be on the town vote.
So I guess do we know is.
Leanna, Leanna would have to go to the town and give your notice and then.
Yeah, I was going to to talk to Diane this week about it.
Could be on the town budget if you wanted, if you wanted it to align that way, um, or like you said.
I mean, I wanna do what's best, I mean, I obviously wanna do what's best for the committee and this has been very, this is obviously a difficult, can you guys hear me? It's like very weird in my, um, it's obviously been a like challenging decision because I obviously don't wanna just not continue the term. But I I just, there's other things going on that I I really just can't commit to two more years. So my plan was to talk to Diane, but I obviously wanted to talk to all of you guys too.
Leanna, could you stay till the end of the school year?
So what would that mean, June?
June, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I I could do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that, is there some reason why that would not be?
No, no, and see, that was my, I was under the impression that I would stop when everyone else stopped for sake of the paperwork and the election, but I might be wrong, so I think I need to confirm.
Well, and also, I don't know that we have any idea about if there are any applicants, you know.
So for, I've worked on, I've talked with multiple people.
Last Tuesday, there was zero.
Oh.
Yeah, I've talked with multiple people, I've had a couple of people interested, but. Um, as far as I'm aware, I don't think the paperwork has been filed.
I asked Diane, I've said this to all of you.
Yeah.
So just as a reminder. Uh, Beth, your your term ends on two thousand twenty-five. Um, Michelle, you're this year. Leanna, I have a conflict on you. It says I'm expired on your term, but then it says two thousand twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it started this year.
Because I had signed up for only one year since I was finishing a previous member's commitment of one year. And then I didn't wanna only do that one year because we had so many decisions at hand, I felt like I should, I wanted to continue to help. But I'm.
Patty, you're twenty-six. And Gina, you're twenty-four.
But twenty-seven seems wrong, cuz wouldn't that be?
You can't have a two-year term that's four years long.
Right, okay, yeah.
One plus two is three. Not four or five.
No, I'm saying, what, should it be twenty-six, is that what, is that what you?
Or I think.
Did you run last year, Leanna?
Yeah, so I ran, I ran last year as, I ran last year for a new term of three years.
Three years, what about twenty-six?
It's twenty-six.
So it should be twenty-six, not twenty-seven.
Okay, when you talk to Diane, have that corrected, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, it's twenty-six, the twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Everything else is right.
So, Leanna.
And I'll.
Yeah, I'd be happy to write up something.
And I'll make, Patty, I'll make sure that there's, that I don't see why that would be an issue, but I'll make sure that I could continue through June, if that's an option. I just don't know how that would work for the next person to.
They would, if if the next person was interested in starting after the school year, they would need to be voted in by the, at a, um. Board of, of U S, a a board of selectmen meeting.
Okay.
They would do the same thing where they would get their signatures, they would, at any point during the year, they would pass it into the town hall. And then at the next board of selectmen meeting, they would be voted in and it would end and they would start.
Okay, yep, I'll, I'll, um, keep you posted on that.
For one, two years.
Two years.
Board of selectmen appointment would be until the next.
Until the next, until the next election.
Yes, that's right.
One is a regular term. Three years.
Two years.
Three.
Three years?
Three, three.
Three years are, is the term, so I already did one.
They're all three.
Yeah, they're all two.
This is my second.
This was very confusing cuz I feel like I don't need them, but yeah, three.
Yes, three-year term.
It's like, it's like when you're filling vacancies.
They're always.
Which makes twenty-seven right.
It's just that some people.
So twenty-one, okay, so twenty.
Twenty-seven.
It's right.
Well, yeah, twenty-seven is right.
It's twenty-six.
Three, twenty-four, no, it's not, it's twenty.
No, it's not, it's twenty-six, I, no, last year I reran for a new term, the year before, my first year, I was taking over for somebody else.
Yeah, it's twenty-six, you're absolutely.
It's twenty-six, yeah.
Three-year term.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll write up something tomorrow, I'll I'll be all day doing.
And then I will keep you, Patty, I will let you know if, you know, what the status is.
Or she or he, they showed that the Leannas, they could choose to then be on the ballot or not.
Right, right, exactly, that's what I was thinking, and because she is interested, but kind of that it might be, that might go into a certain bit for her, cuz it doesn't submit her into anything.
Say it again?
Uh, Gina and I both have a, uh, like this other second grade mom that we both reached out to separately, um, and I. Uh, I think like filling your seat and not going after town election might be a palatable way to like make your feet wet and then she.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So.
Good.
Yeah, I'm more, I've been working on it, like, I really have, I've talked to like, I'd say fifteen different people about it, so I'm definitely working at trying to fill it.
Great. Are there any other announcements? Well, for everybody watching this, please reach out to, if you're in other, please reach out to people who don't, to other people.
You don't have the minutes, I forgot to bring with me for the executive session.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
But we don't need them right now.
We're going to do executives.
I know, but we don't need them right this moment, if we're gonna adjourn. And go into, yeah, there's something that adjourned to the executive session. I'll make a motion to it during the executive session eight thirty-nine.